Good evening. The meeting of the Monroe Township Board of Education will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty, justice for all.
May we have our roll call, Mr. Gorsky?
Mrs. Cole Ponowitz.
Here.
Mr. Chiarella.
Here.
Ms. Antellas.
Here.
Mr. Braverman. Mr. Kaufman.
Here.
Mr. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Leary.
Here.
Mr. Masters.
Here.
Mr. Tesler.
Here.
Mrs. Ferroni.
Here.
Madam Board President, you have a call.
Thank you. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted May 4th, 2012, 1 at all schools, 2 home news Tribune, 3 Cranberry Press, and 4 filed with the Clerk of the municipality. At this time, we will go to number 5 on the agenda, our Teacher Recognition Awards. And before we hand out the awards, I'd just like to say a couple of short words regarding our teachers. We just had an opportunity before this meeting to honor our honorees, our Teachers of the Year, Professionals of the Year, at a dinner from our, in the school, by students from the Culinary 1 and 2 and the International Gourmet Classes. So they've done an excellent job in their service and their preparation, so I'd like to commend them and thank them for a wonderful dinner. This has always been one of our favorite days in the Board of Education because it's the opportunity that we have to honor some of our outstanding educators in our district. These people that we honor tonight are not just teachers and educators, but are role models, caregivers, counselors, supporters, disciplinarians, problem solvers, decision makers, and that's just to name a few. They go beyond and above the daily responsibilities of a classroom teacher and deal with the whole child, the academic, the social, the emotional, and the physical well-being of all their students. Every day, they make a difference in the lives of children and help to change the future. They are dedicated, caring, and they're always professional. So at this time, Dr. Hamilton and I will be presenting them with plaques from the Board of Education.
At this time, we'd like to acknowledge the Monroe Township Middle School Teacher of the Year, Michelle Murphy. The Oak Tree Educator of the Year, Marie McNutt. Mill Lake, Brooke Kruger. Crager. Educator of the Year for Woodland School, Peggy Margaret Eckstein. Barkley Brook, Olga de Grazia. Monroe Township High School, Matthew De Filippis. And last but not least, Brooks Si, Blue Collapati. Congratulations to all of our nominees.
Okay, at this time, we will go to reports from our student board members.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Several events took place this month. May 3rd, there was an informative blood drive assembly. May 5th, the SATs took place at Monroe Township High School. Junior prom is tomorrow, May 11th, at Crown Plaza. From May 7th to 16th, there's AP testing. From May 15th to 16th, the freshmen will be taking their bio exit exam. From May 28th to June 1st, there is no school.
Okay, and just to continue. The PTO Scholarship Dinner was held May 2nd at the Forest Gate Country Club. And senior activities are beginning. June 5th will be the senior picnic, and obviously, the upcoming, the senior prom will be June 8th. And to follow up with that, project graduation, the letters were also mailed out to the homes of seniors. And just a note for the school, Monroe Township High School is continuing to host visitors, such as individuals from West Morris who were interested in the iPad Initiative and the Avid Program. And Princeton Symphony will be here on Saturday to hold a concert at 7 o'clock. That concludes our report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. This time, we will go to number 7 on the agenda, public forum. Anyone from the public wishing to speak to the agenda, please come up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
The Robert Roach, 18 Muirfield Boulevard. These are the board action items. Let me make sure, get my page. It's page 39. Number A. Says it is recommended the, I have three questions, so maybe I'll just ask the questions and you guys can respond. It's recommended the board approve the attached list of requests for staff development. There's no attached list, and I see that many, many times, and I just wonder whether, why there's never an attached list. But I would like to know who is receiving them, the staff professional development, how much each individual is receiving, what's the purpose of them. Then, on the next page, 40, says it is recommended the board approve the sidebar agreement between Monroe Township Board of Education and Monroe Township Education Association. Would like to know what that's all about. And M, on that same page, talks about the after-school program. My question is, is the, are the employees paying for that, or is that a benefit that they receive?
The after-school program, Mr. Roach, what's your question on that? What number, what number is that?
That is M. I just want, on page 40, the last item, actually.
Oh, okay.
My question is, do the employees pay for that, or is that a benefit that's provided to them?
That will be, when it begins operation in September, that program will be paid for by the employees.
Okay.
It will be a self-sustaining program. Regarding your question on professional development, there is a list that is available for professional development that is part of what happens every month, that covers everyone in the entire district. You can certainly Oprah that, that list, if you'd like access to that. It is a public document.
But you have to go through the Oprah process?
Yes. And the sidebar agreement speaks specifically to an agreement that was reached with the association after negotiations relative to instructional support facilitators, and that came about as a result of the acquisition of the EE4 NJ Grant, where teachers were asked to provide additional training to their colleagues, and the association negotiated with the board for stipend associated with those duties and responsibilities above their normal workday.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else from the public?
Anthony Presiosa, way to question, way. Has there been any progress in the request for the iPads for the middle school? They're not in the resource rooms now, and while I was here today, I showed a couple of board members how well my son, who's nine, who's autistic, his tone with his fingers has improved greatly with using the iPad. If some of these kids don't have the iPad in the resource room in the middle school, when they get to high school, they're gonna be lagging behind. So I was hoping that maybe we could get a couple iPads in the resource room in the middle school.
There has been progress, Mr. Presiosa. I'd like to call Ms. Riewella, head of Special Services, and she could give you an update of where we are. I don't, she'll define what we mean by resource room and special needs and where the placements have been.
Okay, don't go away. Come on. I'm gonna explain a little bit to you. Okay, right now, as you said, we were utilizing the iPads as an augmentative device throughout the district, and now we've expanded that into the middle school. Our self-contained classroom is utilizing that as a tool for the classroom. The teachers were trained, parents were trained, parents were offered training, and the actual at-full tech person came in and worked with the classroom. So we're starting there. Now, when you speak about a resource room, that's a small group of children that are brought into the classroom, and they change different teachers and they change classes. So their knowledge of the iPad would be like any other child that goes to the high school. They will learn it when they get there. We have so much offered at the high school with training and other students that would work with it. So right now, we're starting in the middle school in the self-contained classroom and hope to work with other groups at this time.
These special kids are gonna be targeted to learn, before they get into high school, how to use an iPad?
Well, the group that I'm speaking about right now, in the middle school, does, they do have the iPads within the classroom.
They're special needs kids?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
It's self-contained classroom.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else from the public? Okay, seeing no one, we will go to the superintendent's report. Dr. Hamilton?
Thank you. Again, I'd like to just commend our teachers who were honored this evening, and to all the teachers during Teacher Appreciation Week for their exceptional dedication to our district, and also National Nurses Day for, I wanna acknowledge our nurses for their work in our district and with our students as well. The superintendent's report, enclosed, you will find the enrollment report. We actually have a decline of three students for the first time since I can remember. You also have the enrollment for out-of-district placement, as well as those students who are currently on homebound instruction for various reasons. Also included in your report are the two required fire drill and lockdown drills at each school. And moving on to the personnel report. Madam Board President and members of the Board of Education, it is recommended by the superintendent that Personnel Items A through Y be approved by roll call vote.
Mr. Chiarella, Ms. Antellas. Are there any comments or questions for the superintendent? Okay, seeing none, we'll have a roll call. Mr. Gorsky?
Ms. Antellas?
Yes, and recuse myself on item S, like Sam.
So noted. Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferroni?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes, to all, recuse on Q.
So noted. Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole Ponowitz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, Personnel Items A through Y passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Board President, members of the Board of Education, moving on to board action.
Is there any reason we skip C?
There isn't. Madam Board President, members of the Board of Education, it is recommended by the superintendent that Personnel Action Item Z be approved by roll call vote as well.
So moved. Ms. Antellas, Mr. Chiarella. Any questions or comments? Then we will have a roll call.
Ms. Antellas?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferroni?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Well, my well-known concern about HIB, I say yes, except for item J.
Mr., we're doing number Z, just Z on the board report?
He's doing Z because he missed Z.
Oh, I stand corrected.
Thank you.
Is that affirmative? Yes?
It's affirmative.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole Ponowitz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, Item Z passes under Personnel Items.
Thank you.
And under Board Action Items, Madam Board President and members of the Board of Education, it is recommended by the superintendent that Board Action Items A through O be approved by roll call vote.
Mr. Chiarella, Ms. Antellas, are there any comments or questions? Mr. Klein?
Couple. First of all, on D, the list of suspensions. Again, we have a major problem with the students in the high school. Before the school year, I met with Rob and the Assistant Principals with my suggestion of more appropriate penalties for the violations, and to me, it looks like it's not working. I'm not gonna go into everything here. I found it very, very disturbing, but one of the most disturbing things was one student at the high school in the 11th grade cut honors physics, physics, three times. Honors. Now we got one of our top kids, I would think.
You really shouldn't be addressing student matters in public.
Oh, so in other words, you can't discuss this at all? Okay. I will not say anything about this, I just, I'm very disturbed about the amount of violations, and they're getting harsher. Now, second thing is on J. It is recommended that the members of the Monroe Township Board of Education approve Challenge Day, a California-based nonprofit organization, to provide services, people, and materials for three days of student workshops focused on student harassment, bullying, respect, for a total of $9,600 plus reimbursement for airfare, hotel, transportation, and miscellaneous made to the vendor. If this is on bullying, we have the administrative assistant whose job it is, one of her jobs, was to train anti-bullying. Why are we bringing in a company from California to do what one of our staff members is being paid to do?
Mr. Goodall, you wanna explain what Challenge Day is?
Is he there?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We did some research, Ms. Diane Peterson, guidance counselor, did some research on outside programs to make connections with kids, to work with identified kids. We went and we visited a couple of schools who run Challenge Day. We worked with the administration from those schools, and of the programs that we saw, we thought were most appropriate for Monroe, Challenge Day stood out in how they make connections directly with kids. So we felt it was appropriate to allocate and, you know, ask for the funding to run this program.
My feeling is, it's a duplicate of what should be done, and I cannot see laying out what may amount to be upwards of $16,000 for this when we are paying somebody here that is responsible for training. I respect what Mr. Goodall said, but when it comes to money, and especially for this, where we're paying somebody in the staff, on the staff, to do this, I am totally against it, and I will vote against it. And I suggest other members do the same. That is it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Goodall.
Mr. Goodall?
Oh, wait.
Mr. Masters?
No, so these are student workshops, not teacher workshops?
It's a, it's a student-driven workshop. It's collaborative. We asked some teachers to get some training from the organization to work with them. It's a, it's a young people's workshop, and with all due respect to all the administrative team who work with the kids, it's really, it's a real student-centered workshop, that they really make connections with the kids. If you saw the actual program, you'll know exactly what I mean. The staff who runs it is significantly, significantly younger than I am, and they really make the connections with the kids. And if you saw the program and the activities that they run, you would understand that, you know, this type of outside organization is really appropriate for what we're trying to accomplish here at the high school.
Do we have a date? Is there a date?
We're tentatively targeting November to do this. We try to work within the calendar. The calendar, our activities calendar is not complete, but the last conversation we had, we're targeting November.
Can we observe it, if the board wanted to?
Absolutely. If you wanna participate, I can arrange that, too.
I wanna participate.
Mr. Leary, you could be in my group.
He's gonna have to remind me around October.
It really is, you know, it's not something that I would approve unless I thought it was really worthwhile for the kids. And it's, it really is something that is maybe beyond our expertise, or, you know, me being the principal, it comes different from an outside organization. I think this is perfect for, for what we wanna do and target bullying in schools.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Ferroni?
While I appreciate and respect Mr. Klein's concerns, I think, I had three children go to the high school with Mr. Goodall as the principal, and children, kids will be kids, and issues will happen, and I never once felt my kids are unsafe or unprotected under Mr. Goodall and the administration and staff. I would like to know a little bit more, I would like to know a little more about it. I don't wanna vote yes or no, or decline it without getting a little more information. Can we table it and get some more information till the next meeting, or does it need to be approved tonight? 'Cause I don't wanna risk him losing this, if information is an issue.
Mr. Goodall, is there a challenge with it needing to be approved tonight, and any timelines we need to be aware of?
Only that, because they do it nationwide, and there is a definite timeline that, in order to secure their services, and we have it kinda pinpointed for November, and by delaying it, it would only, you know, put at risk having to be able to do the program in November and then move it to a different timeline. And it's Madison Square Garden here, we do so many things every day, it's hard to pinpoint and get these organizations to come in, what's, you know, an appropriate time for us. So that would be the only concern, that we would lose that timeline and that window for them to come.
I'm okay with that. I just, I don't, knowing Mr. Goodall, I don't think he's spending some frivolous that's not going to be necessary for the children, so that's fine with me.
Thank you. And a program like that, to me, is something you need to do at the beginning of the year and not something that you should hold off. Anything that could help bullying, you know, I'd like to see done earlier in the year. We do things consistently throughout, but a program like that, and the amount of money you're spending on it, I think you'd get the real benefit if you had it earlier in the year and waiting to try to fit it in, you know, right before exams or near the vacation, the spring vacation, things like that. So just consider that when you make a decision.
Mr. Goodall, is there any information that can be sent home to the board members so that they know what they will be voting on today?
I most certainly could prepare something to have it sent out to you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Antellas?
Mr. Goodall, how'd you hear about the program?
It was brought through my attention through Mrs. Peterson, guidance counselor, and we actually, there was about 15 of us went and participated at Jackson Memorial High School with their program. They invited us, the Challenge Day people invited us to be a part, not only just to view it, to be a part of it. So, and having taught there for 10 years, it was unique for me to go back, see some old colleagues, but also work with kids that, you know, I was pretty familiar with. So, you know, I totally endorse the program. It's great for our kids, and I know it is a little bit costly, but I think it's really worthwhile if we're looking at, you know, having kids act the right way and, you know, work together and try to get this done for them, and I really see it as an appropriate program, so I really endorse it.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just, just for clarification, in the board packet with the supplemental documents, the contract and description of Challenge Day was included in the packet, so you already had that information.
And that's pretty much what I would provide you. I mean, I'll try to get some additional literature on it, though.
Ms. Antellas?
Just had a comment, just a comment. I just saw in the news again today that another young lady committed suicide after being bullied at another school. I think this is a really important program for our students, and considering that at the last board meeting, this board voted to allow an outside group to make about $150,000 a year off of our students and parents, I think that this is a valuable program for our students.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yeah, I just wanna just reiterate what Dr. Hamilton said, because we did get some information home in our board packet. So the information was there, that's what I read, so that, I'll be making my decision based upon that. I just don't, I don't want the, you know, I don't want the public to think that we're voting on something here that hasn't been reviewed. I mean, we did receive some information regarding this program, so, and then your recommendation, in my mind, is enough on top of what we received for me to make a decision.
It really is a structured venue to bring kids who are having trouble with each other together, and again, I invite you to come and even participate. Mr. Leary, have you signed up?
I'll be there.
It's, it really is a great venue to get kids together who have some differences, and, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't stand here and tell you that, that it's nothing short of what I'm telling you it is.
Mr. Tesler?
Just one quick, one quick, one quick comment. Mr. Goodall, if you say it's a good program to benefit the kids, I'm in favor of it, and what money we're investing in the program, if it saves one child, it's money well worth spent.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any more questions for this?
Excuse me.
Any more questions? Okay, then we'll have a roll call. Mr. Gorsky?
Ms. Antellas?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferroni?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes on everything, no on D as in dog, and J.
D and J, so noted.
D and J, D as in dog.
Mr. Leary?
I go yes, except for item J, which is no, and is my well-stated opinion about HIP. I consider it a bloody abomination.
So noted. Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole Ponowitz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, Board Action Items A through O passes.
Okay, thank you.
That concludes the superintendent's report.
And we will go on to the Business Administrators Report. Mr. Gorsky?
Madam Board President and members of the Monroe Township Board of Education, it is recommended that Board Action Items A through H be approved by consent roll call.
Mr. Chiarella?
Second.
Ms. Antellas? Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Gorsky?
I just, I had a question on the Code of Ethics. Do we have to sign a copy and give it to you?
Yes.
'Cause I know it was in our packet.
Yes.
So we have to give you a hard copy, signed?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, we will have a roll call.
Ms. Antellas?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferroni?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole Ponowitz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, Board Action Items A through H passes.
Okay, thank you. Does that conclude your report?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. At this time, we will go to number 10, the Board's President's Report. And mine is very short, because I think anything I need to say tonight can be accomplished through the committee reports, but I just wanna commend the Monroe Township Middle School for participating in a food drive where they donated 2,500 pounds of food to the Middlesex County Food Organization and Outreach Distribution Services. And there was only five schools in the whole Middlesex County that donated more than, or middle schools. middle schools, so I'd like to commend the staff and the students for that accomplishment. And at this time, we will go to committee reports. Is there anyone who has a? Mr. Leary?
I have three resolutions here that reflect the work of the Finance Committee. The first is that the, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Willance Goldman and Spitzer Professional Association, the firm, as the general counsel for the appointment and approval of professional legal services between the Board and the firm for an annual retainer of fifty-four thousand dollars for up to thirty hours. And I need, I need new glasses. Pardon me, I'm sorry about that. And let me just, I'll tell you what. Let's just go down to the bottom line. It is resolved that the Board President and the Business Administrator and Board Secretary, as the attesting witnesses, are hereby authorized to sign the agreement. I-
So that's a motion by Mr. Leary, which Mr. Gorski will-
I, I incorporate the, what's in this document because my eyesight is going on me. I'm sorry about that.
Mr. Gorski will read it again, but it's motion by Mr. Leary and second by Ms. Antellas. Any comments, questions? Okay, Mr. Gorski.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have a roll call?
Yes. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Willance Goldman and Spitzer PA Firm as general counsel and approve the agreement for professional legal services between the Board and the firm for the period July 1st, 2012 through June 30, 2013. The Board will pay the firm an annual retainer of fifty-four thousand dollars for up to thirty hours of professional legal services each month. The Board will pay the firm an hourly rate of one-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars for shareholders, one-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars for associates and counsel, and ninety-five dollars for paralegals for matters not covered by the retainer. The Board will also reimburse the firm for such costs as computer research, UPS overnight, messenger, long-distance telephone calls, facsimile, photocopy, and the like. Be it further resolved that the notice of the award of the above-described contract for legal services shall be provided as required by NJSA 18A:18A-5A1. Be it further resolved that this resolution and agreement shall be maintained on file and available for public inspection in the Board's office. Be it further resolved that the Board President and the Business Administrator, Board Secretary, as attesting witnesses, are hereby authorized to sign the agreement. Ms. Antellas?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman, I beg your pardon, he's absent. Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferroni?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, motion passes. And if I may, I would just like to thank Mary Smith and attorneys at Willance for all their guidance throughout the year.
Thank you. Mr. Leary, do you have another?
I have two more. And again, my, I have some medication that, plus, my, my sight is right now shot. Let, let Mr. Gorski please carry forward.
Resolution of the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe authorizing the acquisition of instructional technologic, technology equipment, playground equipment, and office equipment and the financing thereof. Whereas NJSA 18A:18A-42 authorizes the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe, the Board to enter into a contract exceeding the fiscal year for the leasing of equipment of every nature and kind, and whereas the Board has a need to acquire instructional technology equipment, the playground equipment, and the office equipment as described in Schedule A attached heretofu collectively the equipment for school purposes, and whereas the Board desires to acquire the equipment through state contract, and whereas the Board desires to obtain financing for the equipment of the, acquisition of the equipment through competitive bidding. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board as follows. Section one, the Board hereby authorizes the Superintendent, Board Secretary, and the Board's Bond Counsel to proceed to draft documents and conduct such other activities as are necessary to accomplish, A, the acquisition of the equipment through state contract, B, the receipt of bids for the financing of the acquisition of the equipment. Section two, the Board hereby directs the Board Secretary to process the necessary purchase orders to acquire the equipment in advance of the receipt of the bids for financing the acquisition of the equipment. Such purchase orders shall be expressly subject to the condition that the Board receives and accepts one or more bids for the financing of such equipment. The Board, I'm sorry, the award for the financing of the equipment shall be an encumbrance against 2012-2013 budget. The Board President and the Board Secretary are hereby authorized and directed to determine all matters in conjunction with the acquisition and financing of the equipment, not determined by this or subsequent resolution of the Board as permitted by law. Section four, a copy of this resolution shall be placed on file with the Secretary of the Board. Section five, the making and submission of the, the making of and submission to the county superintendent of the application as required by NJAC 6A:26-10.1D is hereby authorized and approved, and the Board's Bond Counsel, along with other representatives of Board, are hereby authorized and approved to prepare and submit such application and to represent the Board in matters pertaining thereto. Section six, the Board hereby appoints the law firm of McCarter English LLP to provide specialized legal services necessary in conjunction with the financing of the equipment. The Secretary of the Board is hereby authorized to cause, to cause to be permitted any notice required by NJSA 18A:18A-5A1 in conjunction with such appointment. This resolution shall take effect immediately.
Is there a motion?
I'll make it.
Second by, and second by Mr. Leary. Any comments or questions? Mr. Chiarella?
Yes. Is this just a general policy on purchasing equipment or are we looking to purchase equipment? Is there a specific equipment that we're purchasing?
This resolution covers a couple items. Number one, the authorization to issue purchase orders for such equipment, and that was technological instruction-related monitors, and also playground equipment, and also a copy machine. And also authorizes the, the Board of Education to solicit bids for the financing of that lease purchase.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll call, Mr. Gorski?
Ms. Antellas?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferroni?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, motion passes.
And I believe, Mr. Leary, you have-
You have the third one, and again, I'll defer to Mr. Gorski because my vision is shot.
It is recommended that members of the Monroe Township Board of Education authorize and approve a withdrawal from the capital reserve account in the amount of one-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand to Fund 12 Construction Services Account 12-000-400-450 for capital projects throughout the districts. Projects to be considered are roofing at Monroe Township Middle School, HVAC at Applegart School and Brookside School, asphalt at Barclaybrook School, Monroe Township Middle School and Applegart School, along with engineering fees.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Chiarella, second by Mr. Leary. Again, if there are any comments or questions, then we will have another roll call.
Ms. Antellas?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferroni?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, motion passes.
Mr. Leary, are you still on your Finance Committee report?
No, with that, that concludes it, and please pass this on to my-
Are there any other reports? Mr. Tesler?
Thank you. Last week, we had a personnel committee. The following topics were discussed. Topic number one, review of the Assistant Superintendent Contract and Cost Analysis. The committee reviewed the contract for Jeff Gorman for the upcoming school year, 2012 and 2013, and the cost analysis for that. The committee authorized a submission of the contract and the corresponding 2% raise to the county office for approval, and we'll be voting on that next month. We interviewed, we conducted interviews for the Director/Head Teacher for the Employee Early Child Care Center. We interviewed three candidates. We also discussed the MTA Sidebar Agreement, which was already approved earlier tonight. Other staffing consideration for the Employee Early Child Care Center, the committee discussed a request from the Director of Facilities to hire a part-time custodian for the purpose of attending to the care of the maintenance of the Mill Lake Anics. The cost will be absorbed in the Monroe Township Child Care Academy Budget. The committee gave consent to proceed with the position. Mr. Gorski presented the proposal submitted by the Central Office Support Staff Association and the Administration's counterproposal, and the committee authorized him to present the counteroffer on the behalf of the Board of Education. Also, Dr. Hamilton reintroduced the request from the Director of IT for a change in a secretary position to include secretary, secretary slash student information system data manager to comply with the new state, new state regulations. This item was discussed at the March 20th meeting and was just reintroduced for consent by the committee. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Mr. Kaufman?
We have, the Curriculum Committee actually was held yesterday. It was a rather long one. So what I'd like to do is turn it over to Jeff Gorman. As some of you may remember from the last board meeting, we asked to get an update on the iPad program in totality. So Jeff is going to talk to many different aspects of the iPad program. So you're up, Jeff.
Okay, good evening, everybody. The full presentation will be available on our website tomorrow. This is a much, much condensed version for the sake of this forum. So I'll just focus in on some highlights. And again, the depth to discussions that we had in the Curriculum Committee are much more substantial than an overview that I'm going to give you tonight. This is our six-month report on our iPad learning tool infusion initiative at the high school. It's comprised of seven major categories, vision, communication, curriculum, assessment, and reporting, professional development, infrastructure, and financial planning. Each one has a set of action steps that we have been following since the implementation. This is our Phase One implementation. There's a Phase Two that goes from six months out. So looking on the vision, Dr. Hamilton, just as a recap, gave an overview of why we set out on this journey to create a one-to-one technology learning environment for our students. We gave an overview of the district mission, our district beliefs, and really emphasized why, because the why is the important piece. It's not the how and the what. So a lot of times, we start with the what and the how, and that's the iPads and how we're doing it, but it's really why are we doing our work? So that's really important on establishing that piece. We also introduced some dialogue that's been happening with Mr. Goodall and his staff about second-year observable indicators for both teachers and students. Just to give you one of the slides from, a highlight from that part of the presentation, we gave a list of why the iPad is aligned to the district mission and beliefs and why is it a good fit. So I'll leave it up there just for viewing instead of reading to you. And again, everything will be posted on our website after the meeting tonight. As we moved on to communication, communication is a second key component to the action plan, communication. The recap of that presentation came from our numerous press releases, our website, our Champions of Education, other outreach via radio interviews and, and outreach to communities. We've presented at least two senior communities with the iPad on weekends, and students have led those programs on our outreach. Also, we focused in on the abundance of educational institutions that have reached out to us regarding the iPads. I highlighted that an avid school in Michigan is starting a one-to-one iPad initiative in September, and I want to know how we are handling or what kind of leadership we could give them regarding the binders on whether to go electronic, because as you know, avid is a college readiness system. So the overwhelming support from, from avid central was yes, we have to move to that environment, because that's the environment that our kids are going to enter when they get to a college atmosphere or a workplace readiness atmosphere. And again, just a highlighted slide that includes its press releases, webpages, our TV channel, technology forums, and throughout the tri-state area. As we move on to curriculum, we had a couple of different presentations. We had a teacher and a student present, and the presentation was very impressive. It was, it was based off of a physics, a science class, and, and the student did a really neat demonstration on an iMovie that she created about their journey through physics in the high school. We talked about how we're going to monitor curriculum writing process with the infusion of the iPad next year. One of our science teachers and the science team, along with the content supervisors, have created a monitoring tool, so curriculum will be aligned with iPad strategies. And so there's a connection that our curriculum leads right to the, the most effective instruction for our kids. We also had a nice conversation about digital textbooks. And so last, when we started this implementation, digital textbooks were on the horizon, but they weren't where they are now. So that's a developing conversation that we had about what comes next for our students next year in the world of digital, interactive textbooks. Told you about the student-teacher presentation. We capped off with some really cool things that are going to happen next year in Monroe, establishing a presence in our university, so we have an application process to get on that, in that, in that domain, so we could start authoring our content and, and having people access it from that, throughout the world. We also talked about an app development course next year, and put on the table that we have to have discussions regarding policy and with the Board about what if a student or a teacher creates a billion-dollar app or something in the future, you know, and whose responsibility and who benefits from those, from that creation. As we moved on to assessment and reporting, we, we just administered a progress check with our students and our teachers. So we gave an initial survey when we implemented the iPads in October, and now, six months later, we gave a follow-up progress check. And we started to really analyze preliminarily some of the data, and we came to some really interesting conclusions, both positive and for areas that we need to grow upon. We looked at the students' technology skills. There was a report that 23% of the kids had iPads before we gave them to them, but yet they didn't use it in an educational variety in any way, shape, or form. And so six months later, all of our kids, those, those statistics were very impressive, and they will serve as further baseline data. So in six months or a year from now, we'll be able to look at it and, and monitor that progress. We also, there was a lot of comments and a lot of testimonials on the surveys that we put out based on assignments and projects that students learned from most in the first six months with the iPad. And then we broke it down content-specific to language arts, science, engineering, mathematics, history, world language, and electives. And then we did a little comparison between our student and teacher surveys. So I'll show you two pretty interesting slides on the student survey piece. For students who report that teachers are using the iPad, overall, are you satisfied with the iPad as an educational tool? And overall, students were either satisfied or very satisfied. That's combined in a Likert scale modality. And that decline from ninth to 12th is an interesting piece, and we discussed that a little bit about what could have possibly caused that. One of the things that we got back from some of the comments is that the 12th graders say, hey, wherever these been my whole career, now you're giving them to me as 12th graders. We also talked about how, in the future, we're looking to track that trend, and if we're setting kids up for college and career readiness, we, we are, you know, I'm very curious to see if that trend will move. We talked about the correlation possibly to our freshman academy and our career academies at the high school. And then we correlated this data. And this data talks about teachers and students from the teacher's survey. And so is there a correlation? And so this type of data is giving us some rich dialogue to really look at monitoring the process in year two and, and providing the correct professional development for teachers and the right learning environment for students. And again, we, we presented a lot more data last night. As we moved on to professional development, one of the things it talked about is that in the beginning, when we gave out iPads, we were in a reactive state, right? September came, we switched platforms, we started giving out professional development for teachers reactively because that's what happened. We were making a big move in school culture and the way we do business, so we had to provide some support for that. Ideally, if we could go back a year in time and do it all again, we would have given more lead time for the professional development, but that wasn't our reality at that point. So since September, we've done an influx of professional development. We've created a group of vanguard teachers and students that have been trained. They've started to turnkey that professional development to their peers through different courses, through a help desk that's located outside that's open all day for both students and teachers. So it's teachers teaching teachers, students teaching students, and we're trying to really establish that environment where people learn best. Because one of the things that we did find and talk about last night is that people come along at different rates, and we have to be appropriately responsive to those rates. So the training, you know, started through those first couple of months. Then we got some responses... Some responses from both teachers and students. And so next year's professional development will be more proactive, and I'll show you a little bit about what I need. Again, we had a teacher presentation on her presentation out to teachers, and that was pretty impressive. That was a three-minute iMovie made on an iPad about her interaction with her adult learners in the school. So, next year, we have the advantage of planning early. So next year, we're already looking at a book study in the high school based on iPads in the 21st century classroom. We're also looking at our year-long professional development program, so teachers will be able to sign up now for next year's year-long professional development, so this will be a continuous flow for them. It'll be pre-planned, so they'll have a goal in mind. Also, we'll continue our district-run mini-courses based on different topics and needs, based off of the assessment that we have and the feedback that we're getting. We banked nine additional professional development days that we had purchased originally for next year. The E4J Teacher Evaluation Tool has a technology component that the high school staff has started to engage their staff members in. So we're making connections with the iPads, practice, instruction, curriculum, and assessment. And then teachers, in collaboration with their administrators, develop a professional growth plan each year, and then this will also include parts of the Technology Infusion Initiative. One thing that I want to clarify, and I say regularly, this was not a technology initiative as much as it was a learning initiative, and that's a very important point to stress. We are out for to get kids to higher levels of thinking, and that's why we're doing it, all right? As we moved on to the infrastructure, Mr. Washington talked about all the really cool things that have been happening since September. We have over 200 Wikis spaces created by teachers and students. It's very impressive considering pre-six months is about a handful. So that was very impressive. We're ready to go forward with podcasts. Podcasts on our server will allow teachers and students to make videos and record what they're doing, so if I was doing a workshop right now, you could, you know, tape me and we could play it back very easily for both students and teachers. They could access it at any time, and it becomes an incredible asset, and we're pulling together that learning community. We talked about the iCloud and lockers. Vendor supports are starting to react very much to us, so the iPads are hot, you know, they are all over the nation educationally, and so vendors are now really starting to cater to the educational needs of schools. We talked about the future of projecting through Apple TVs. Apple TV is just, as you know, is a little box that sits on top of the projector and allows me to take my iPad wirelessly, project both audio and video-wise. We actually demonstrated it last night, and through just a couple of taps on the iPad, we were up and running, and that was an impressive presentation. And then we talked about the good and the bad. We have to collect the iPads this year to, you know, reboot them and get them ready for next year. And so the good news is that the teachers and the students don't want to give them up, because they need them for final exams. The bad news is not a lot of time to do it, so we're in the middle of working with the high school, Mr. Goodall and Mr. Washington and the staff to come up with the best collection method, so we let the kids using it. And that's pretty, that's a pretty positive piece that we are now getting feedback that, don't take these away from it, we're pretty dependent on this for our learning process. All right, and then that's just an example of our Wiki server. Almost done. The last piece is, we talked on finances. We talked about discussions about repairs. Repairs are happening. They're a little bit higher than we anticipated, and we talked about what the rumors are and what the facts are. And we talked about discipline and consequences and reimbursement and the protection plan and why these are happening, and we're going to start talking about possible future solutions. Here's the big slide that we talked about. We talked about the fact that iPads do break, the screens do break. As of April 26, we've sent out 259 iPads for repair. We have 59 more to be repaired. We budgeted about $78,000 based on what we collected from parents. This year, however, was a little bit challenging, because what we didn't anticipate is that if somebody breaks their iPad, we have to give them a loaner. So for this year only, we purchased 100 loaners. If we didn't purchase those 100 loaners, we would have been within the kitty that we had established for repairs this year. So we are currently a little bit over, and we're using and we're generating those funds based on the repair and maintenance. The reason we put this out is what's next? And as this initiative evolves, this was not a six-month initiative. This was a long-term initiative that the board spoke at length about. And so these are the conversations that we are now going to put out there as next steps. What happens as digital textbooks continue to explode on the market and publishing companies redefine their trade? Now, it's a very hot topic. I've been meeting with a person that is connected to CEOs of Pearson, McDowell, and all, Wencow, and all the top publishers, and they're redefining the piece. One of the misses that has happened is that the local sales are not connecting to the entire vision, so it hasn't trickled down on what digital interactive textbooks look like in the future. So that was a really neat conversation, because I felt like we had insight to what is really happening with interactive digital textbooks and how they're coming. They've also talked about compressing the size of the digital textbooks, so that is happening on a regular basis. And now we sort of have an insight in possibly piloting different textbooks. We're looking at an Algebra I series for all on the Common Core next year, and one of the things we discussed last night, which is pretty neat also. So those books, they update regularly. When you get a regular textbook and you adopt one as a school district, it's yours for five or more years usually. While the Common Core and these digital textbooks get regularly updated, and you get an email that says, okay, delete your current version, reload from the cloud, and you're up and running. So you get the most current, interactive, digital content, and what's pretty neat about these books is that they do, they interact with you. So that's sort of the future. And how that works out, we're not really sure yet, because, like I said, we're in our infancy planning and stages. We also want to have conversations about finances. What are we going to do about the repairs? What comes next? And how are we going to sustain the initiative and possibly expand the initiative, as we heard some interest already tonight, in, you know, where do we go from here as a school district? How's that, Mr. Kaufman?
That was good. It was a little over 20 minutes, but you're all right. It's all right. It was like a two-and-a-half-hour thing we went through yesterday.
That worked, that was right.
A couple of things I just want to mention. Please keep in mind, the board is very sensitive to the nature of this particular initiative. While it brings an incredible vast platform to do a whole lot of things, there's the future, and then there's what is now and what we can manage to. One of the things that was talked about a little bit was, how are we going to self-fund this and how are we going to move this forward? I didn't bring it up last night, but I'm just sitting here realizing that we're almost at the end of the school year. And one of the things that we were just kicking around and spitballing was the idea of potentially offering students, especially seniors, to purchase their iPads to keep the influx of new ones coming in. So if we decide that we even want to consider that, I think we have to send a survey out to see if there's a market for it, because we're running out of time, and seniors are, I think they pretty much have already checked out mentally anyway. So at least we have to find out if there would be a market for them to want to purchase their iPads, and we may have to have, if it's going to be a lot. We don't have another board meeting until the end of June, right?
We have, we have a date of June 5.
June 5, okay.
We have to approve it tonight.
All right, so I was just concerned that we wouldn't be having another board meeting to make any kind of decisions on anything until later. So we might need to be a little aggressive about finding out if we're going to entertain this even at all, that we need to kind of move this along. That's it, I'm done.
Do you have a question for?
No, I think we could also convene a special meeting if it's required, you know, to meet Lou's requirements for timing. You would convene it and give public notice, and we'd go from there.
We may also want to consider, because it's a finance thing, combining the curriculum and finance together, so that we get everybody at the same time. We don't have to have double meetings, you know?
Well, that I think, if we had, if you had both committees together, that would consist of a quorum, and I don't know.
All the committee members don't have to show up, and some of them are on both. So we can figure it out.
Yeah, we could. Any other, Mr. Chiarella?
Yeah, I saved mine for last, because I thought I would be long. I just want to know if I could turn that over to you now, Dr. Gorman? Do you have a PowerPoint for my committee?
You know, lately, I've been creating so many PowerPoints, I might just have one if I looked over my files.
We had a, thank you anyway. We had a Buildings, Grounds, and Transportation meeting on May 7, and we discussed a few things. We discussed the Applegarth update, the logos in the, in our gymnasiums. We tabled that for further discussion, just because of the cost associated with that, and doing those all at once would be, might be costly, in that we looked at maybe doing those as we, as we come up for floor refinishing in the various schools. One of the things that we discussed was the lead testing currently going on at Applegarth School, and I just want to quickly read a letter that the committee received from Dr. Lynch on the day, written on the same day that we had our meeting. And it just says, just a quick note to bring you up to speed on the lead and soil sampling, which took place at Applegarth today. I met with Lewis Consulting Group on-site today and reviewed the building layout, roof contours, and soil, asphalt areas of the Applegarth Building with respect to the 1930s wing and the Coppola. I've requested that they prepare to collect two rounds of sampling, one prior to the Coppola painting and the second round following. Based upon the above, Lewis collected samples from, well, let me just, let me just go back. They collected the samples, but they collected the samples from beneath the newly laid, the mulch level. So when I say, when I say these, and you think zero to six inches, you'll think that's the mulch, but it was beneath the mulch that they started, where they measured. So based on the above, Lewis collected soil samples, zero to six inches depth and a six to 12-inch depth in the drip line areas north and south of Entranceway 1 in the front of the building, as well as the grassy triangle area separating the entry driveway from the sidewalk where water from the roof would accumulate. We also collected samples from the grassy area on the south side of the building, which would not be accepted or expected to receive roof runoff from the Coppola-containing roof. I ensured that all the mulch, et cetera, was removed, so as not to interfere with sampling results. They hand-delivered the samples to my lab today for expedited analysis, and I expect to receive this, receive the results by the end of the week, and I'll be in touch as the results become available. We haven't received those yet, obviously, because today is only Wednesday, but as we, God bless you, as we get those, then we'll, you know, we'll be sure to communicate that to the public and to the other board members. Also, with regards to Applegarth, before, I also have three resolutions. So before, but before I read these in, read the motions in, I just want, I just want to talk about the first one, which is with regards to just filling out the paperwork in order to, so that we can move the trailers from Applegarth to Oak Tree if the need ever arose where we might need to move those trailers. So right now, the plan is to open Applegarth and to use the trailer that's there for, the eight-classroom trailer for office space. Am I, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
But should the need arise, for whatever reason, and, you know, either in the future at some, at some point, that we will have the ability to do that. And we have already spent the money on the filing fees and the permits to get those things done. I believe it was about $6,500. The only thing that needs to be done is the paperwork end of it, so that we can get the approval. Once we have that approval, it gives us the ability to move the trailer should the need arise, for whatever reason. So I just want to be sure that I'm, you know, that I'm explaining that it's not because of any findings, it's not because of the lead letter that I just read in, or any of the other things. It really is just being prudent and having insurance, so that should the need arise, that we have the ability to do that, because the, moving the trailer and going through the approval process is very lengthy and would cost us more money again, so we'll actually be saving if we just do the paperwork at this point. So, that is my first resolution, which I'll read in now. It is recommended that members of the Board of Education approve the submission of the relocation of an eight, of the, of A, eight-classroom, 9,075-square-foot trailer, SP number 3290060-12-1200, from Applegarth School to Oak Tree Elementary School as temporary space to the State and New Jersey Department of Education Office of the School Facilities for review as an other capital project in which the BOE is not seeking state funding. Furthermore, the Board of Education authorized the amendment of the district's long-range facility plan.
So that's a motion I need to second. Second by Mr. Masters. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Chiarella? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call.
Ms. Antellas.
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella.
Yes.
Mr. Feroni.
Abstain.
So noted. Mr. Kaufman. Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Mr. Masters.
Yes.
Mr. Tesler.
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponovich.
Yes.
Madam Board President, motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, yes. The next thing that we discussed is, was, is the naming of the ECCC? Is that enough Cs? The Early Childhood, Early Care, Childhood Care?
Center?
Yes, Employee, the, I'm sorry, not, not the early, oh my gosh. The Employee Childcare?
Center.
Center. Yeah, okay. We have a lot of Cs in there. But anyway, we've made, we've made it easier by naming it and throwing an M in there. So I'm going to read that resolution, and the board obviously can decide not to name it this, but this is what the committee came up with. It is a recommend, it is recommended that the Monroe Township Board of Education approve the following name for the previously-approved Childcare Center for Monroe Township School District Employees.
Ken, I'm sorry. You have to approve the other one first, because the center hasn't been approved yet.
Oh, the fees. The, okay. I'm sorry.
I gotta start over again.
I'm gonna start over again. This, oh, jokes too. No, this one is for approval of the Childcare Center and the fee structure. So I'll read that first, and then we're going to name it. It is recommended that the Monroe Township Board of Education approve the following fee rate schedule for the Monroe Employee Care, I'm sorry, for the Monroe Employee Childcare Academy. Now, it's already named, though, in this. So how could we name it already? I think I have to go with the name first. All right, let's cut.
We'll start again from the very beginning.
Take two. Can I get some powder? Ready?
Well, are we starting from the naming?
Yes.
I guess we have to do the naming first, because the name is listed in here. It is recommended that the Monroe Township Board of Education approve the following name for the previously-approved Childcare Center for Monroe Township School District Employees, which shall commence operations at Mill Lake School Annex in September 2012. Monroe Employee Childcare Academy effective immediately, and authorize the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator and Board Secretary to take all necessary and appropriate steps to implement this action of the Board of Education.
Okay, that was a motion I need to second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Tesler. Any comments or questions for Mr. Chiarella?
No, you already confused me.
Hey, then we will, we will have a roll call to name the Childcare Center the Monroe Employee Childcare Academy.
Ms. Antellas.
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella.
Yes.
Mrs. Feroni.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Mr. Masters.
Yes.
Mr. Tesler.
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponovich.
Yes.
Madam Board President, motion passed.
Thank you.
Now, we just named an academy, now we're going to, we're going to make.
Put it someplace. We're going to put it someplace.
With the fee structure. It is recommended that the Monroe Township Board of Education approve the following fee rate schedule for the Monroe Employee Childcare Academy, which shall be effective upon the commencement of the center's operations at Mill Lake School Annex in September 2012, and authorize the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator, Board Secretary, to take all necessary and appropriate steps to implement this action of the Board of Education. The fee rate schedule. Infants, six weeks to 18 months, $895 per month. Toddlers, 18 months to three years old, $820 per month. Preschool, three years old to six years old, $745 per month. A 10% discount will be given for additional A 10% discount will be given for additional children in the family.
Okay, that was a motion by Mr. Chiarella. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Antellas. Again, are there any comments? Mr. Masters.
Is that a 10% discount for every kid?
In your case, by the time you do that, the first one will be free.
Just click that.
Right into the math.
I guess we'll have a roll call.
Ms. Antellas.
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferroni.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Mr. Masters.
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz.
Yes.
Madam Board President, motion passes.
Thank you.
I'm done.
Are there, are there any other committee reports? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to other Board of Education business. Is there any other business by members of the Board of Education? Mr. Klein.
I would like to make a motion to look into a possible lawsuit against the State of New Jersey and the New Jersey Department of Education in the Superior Court for Monroe Township School Districts. Fair share and state funding. I also request that we attempt to identify other school districts that have similarly affected by the underfunding to join our suits and split expenses. Did I understand that? That didn't make sense.
I understood it, yes.
It's your motion.
I'll second it.
But you'll second it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Chiarella? Okay, you brought this motion, you could start discussion.
As I mentioned at the last meeting, and I promised Lou that I wouldn't use it, but I have no choice. The letter I got back from the supervising attorney of the State Supreme Court, in my letter, I had asked for a hearing for our administration about fixing or rectifying the underfunding to our district. And the letter I received back was that it's not the policy of the Supreme Court to hear anything unless it's, it's gone through the appellate division first. We are not the only ones that are affected. When we're getting $300 per student, when it costs $16,000 a year per student, when the, the state constitution, Article 4, Paragraph 1, I'll paraphrase, "The state is responsible to provide free public education to ages five through 18." Paragraph 2, "The legislature will set aside the funds to provide a free public education to all residents of New Jersey." When we're paying roughly, round figure, 97% of the cost of running this district, that is not a free public school system. And I, and I feel that, not only from them, from the letter I got from the, the attorney, but the person I spoke to at the, at the Newark Education Law Center that brought all these other cases, said that we have the right to sue under those provisions of the Constitution. So I recommend that we look into filing a lawsuit, hoping that we can get some other districts that find themselves short-changed as we are, to help pay for the costs and go along with the lawsuit. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Antellas?
I want to know what "look into" means.
It means to see whether we have, to speak with our attorneys, to find out whether we have a leg to stand on, which, all the letters I've got, we definitely do, and I think we should do everything in our power to get what's rightfully ours.
Do you know how many other districts right now?
No, that's something that we have to look into. That's why the motion is to look into that.
And I just want to know who would look into that?
I would seem to think the administration.
And/or our counsel.
Mr. Leary?
Or our counsel.
I support the measure.
I, I think we would have to get a lot of information. I think the first place that we would probably do is, is talk about it in the committee level, in the Finance Committee, but the board would have to approve that motion so that we could start looking into that.
I agree with that.
Any comments or questions? Okay, do you want to, we'll make a roll call on Mr.?
Before we go, I'm sorry, I'd like to hear from Dr. Hamilton. Do you, do you have any thoughts on this?
I, I think the most prudent thing for us to do is to give counsel an opportunity to prepare a position on whether or not they think this is feasible, one. Two, what the projected legal fees would be associated with this. And three, as best they can, a projection on the likelihood of us being successful in that kind of endeavor.
I think that's a perfect roadmap.
Right, exactly right. Exactly right.
Well, then, can we just change your motion to reflect what Dr. Hamilton said, rather than our administrators going out and spending time with this? Direct him to talk to the attorneys with these three questions.
Well, I suggested that we incorporate the counsel, and I think that's part.
So you want to make a, a motion to amend his motion?
Yes.
To say?
The three items, for Dr. Hamilton to speak to the attorney about the three items that he just mentioned.
Would you have?
And then come back to the.
Would you have a problem?
No, but shouldn't Michael be involved also? As the Business Administrator and Board Secretary?
Well, but right now, what we're trying to do is find out, one, if we can do it.
Right.
Two, what the price of it would be, which, of course, the attorney would have to tell us, and the third was.
Likelihood of recovery.
Likelihood of success. So really, I don't see really.
Michael has to be involved in that. We're talking potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Right. Michael has to be involved.
So you approve your, a motion to have the administration, administrative team look into it?
The administrative team talk to the attorneys about looking.
Yes.
Right.
Would you have a problem?
Absolutely.
I'll second it.
I second the motion.
So, we now will vote on Amy's.
Amended.
Amendment to his motion.
And then my amendment to her amendment.
So you didn't make an amendment.
Well, I did, because we're writing Michael.
Well, she did.
Did you add Michael?
She agreed to put that on her.
Add Michael at Sabers Point.
No, no, he said, she said. That covers the water.
I don't know what his role would be. That's what I'm trying to establish. So I'm just, well, but again, we're, we're trying to find out the feasibility of it, which an attorney's gonna have to tell us. We're gonna have to find out other school districts and, and what the cost is. So to me, that sounds like something the attorney would handle. I, I don't know.
Oh, absolutely.
Michael's role would be.
In conjunction, well, Michael is, is finance.
He's moneybags.
You have to have Michael involved, along with Dr. Hamilton.
Well, I don't think.
What's the big problem?
Well, I'm just, I'm just trying to make sure that our administrators are, are doing the role that they're supposed to, and any attorneys doing their role, so I, I don't know what Michael's role would be in this very initial part. I think, once we find out maybe what the cost is, you know, he's, we're gonna have to talk to Michael and find out where the money would come from.
Again, we are, we are doing examples of stovepipe management. Let's go and do things on an integrated basis, where we have the finance and the administrative team working as a cohesive whole, and let's go forward with this.
Well, the administrative team, to me, would be Dr. Hamilton and Mr. Gorsky.
Amen.
As the, as the Superintendent and the Business Administrator. Mike?
Madam Board President.
Mr. Gorsky?
Thanks. The endeavor on the table, the feasibility study, the solicitation of other districts to join in this suit, the assessment and estimate of costs involved, and the attorney's opinion and assessment on the likelihood of success and the cost benefit thereof, is really a collaborative team effort that certainly would require the efforts of council, administration, and other school districts throughout the state, so.
Thank you, Mr. Gorsky.
So you're, wait.
So, okay, I, I just wanted to clarify so that it's not so broad and, and, you know, gray areas, so, and that sounds like it's a little bit more defined.
So your amendment to his motion would be to have the administrative team with the council?
Yes.
Okay. And Mr. Chiarella, you agree to that?
I'm seconding it, yes.
So we would have to vote on the amendment? So we'll, we'll do a roll call on that.
The amendment is for the Monroe Township Board of Education to engage in a feasibility study, to consider a lawsuit against the State of New Jersey, to seek our fair share of state aid.
And the, and the New Jersey Department of Education.
By stating the State of New Jersey, you cover everything, all departments.
Okay.
And to conduct a feasibility study, to solicit the participation of other districts who are also in our, our presumed underfunded status, to assess the cost of the lawsuit and determine the likelihood of success and, and assess the cost benefit of the endeavor.
And that's Ms. Antellas's amendment?
That's correct.
Okay, so, roll call on that.
Ms. Antellas.
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferroni.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Mr. Masters.
Yes.
Mr. Tesler.
Yes.
Madam Board President.
Yes.
Madam Board President, motion unanimously passes.
Okay, now we have to vote on Mr. Klein's motion to, to, I would guess your, your motion would be to look into a lawsuit. That was your original motion.
Yeah, well, exactly what was just read.
Right.
Is exactly what we want to do.
What you can do is table your motion and get it off the.
Okay, I table my motion.
Okay.
To the motion that we just voted on.
Okay, and now, who, who seconded, who, who seconded his motion?
I seconded it.
So do you, would you feel okay tabling his motion?
Sure.
Okay. So, do we have to vote on that?
No.
No, I didn't think so.
Amy made the motion, and who seconded Amy's motion?
Mr. Chiarella.
Ken Chiarella, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other Board of Education business?
Mr. Kaufman. I noticed on your, the thing you send us for Superintendent.
Confidential?
Right. That we decided to shell the new principal evaluation program. I'm assuming that we're gonna put a different one in place, and we're not shelving the concept, we're just shelving that one?
We are, we, what we're doing is not participating in the state pilot.
Okay.
Ultimately, the other grant that we received, the Learning Forward Grant, will culminate into some kind of new evaluation criteria that would be separate and apart from what the state is doing.
Okay.
But it was, after looking at the grant, the cost of the grant, which was only 11,000, I'll say 12,000, because it was 11,000 some odd dollars, the cost to administer that grant would exceed that amount, for one, and number two, it would, in my mind, be duplicative with the Learning Forward Grant.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we were gonna try and do something there, too. We know it's not just EE4NJ, we should do something at the administrative level, too, to see if there's a better way to do evaluations.
Absolutely.
Curriculum note, for my curriculum, Jeff? Can we just make it book of record that anytime we have a curriculum meeting, materials are sent the day before, like we did for this one? That worked out great. This way, we get the materials to look at, so it's more productive when we get to the meeting. I know you hate me right now, you can get me later. That's it.
I, I think, too, we might consider, we had a lot of committee meetings this week, and I know it was a very difficult time trying to get all these resolutions onto the board agenda, so we might need to consider moving some of the committee meetings to the week before, so that the staff has enough time to get these recommendations into the reports of both Dr. Hamilton and Mr. Gorsky. So for the future, we look like we have a lot of things coming up, so we might want to consider that. And since everybody seems to have three resolutions being read tonight, I have three in regard to changing meeting dates for future Board of Education meetings.
Here we go.
So the first one, it is recommended that members of the Monroe Township Board of Education approve the addition of a special Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, June 5th, 2012, at 7:00 PM at the high school. The purpose of this meeting is for discussion related to composing the Superintendent's written evaluation for submission to the county. Board action may be taken at this meeting.
Superintendent's evaluation doesn't go to the county?
For submission to Board President?
Yes.
To the Board President.
For any clarity, that's something that's gonna happen that night? Superintendent evaluation?
No, there will be other things on the agenda.
Is there, I need a motion in a second. Ms. Antellas, Mr. Masters, any comments or questions? This date, we've already agreed to back in, I think, the last meeting we had. So we'll have a roll call.
Ms. Antellas.
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferroni.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Mr. Masters.
Yes.
Mr. Tesler.
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz.
Yes.
Madam Board President, motion to change the meeting to establish a new meeting on June 5th, passes.
Thank you. It is recommended that members of the Monroe Township Board of Education approve moving the September 26, 2012, Public Board of Education meeting to Wednesday, September 12, 2012, at 7:00 PM. This is necessary as schools will be closed due to young Kabor. So moved.
Second.
Ms. Antellas, Mr. Tesler, we'll have a roll call.
Ms. Antellas.
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferroni.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Mr. Masters.
Yes.
Mr. Tesler.
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz.
Yes.
Madam Board President, motion passes.
Thank you. Is there any other Board of Education business? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to 13, closed session resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves to